All right, folks, I want to welcome everyone to the this meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The date is Monday, October 14th, 2024. The time is now 7:03 PM. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
As well as, I think we have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission present as well. Great, thank you very much. That brings us to invocation and pledge of allegiance by Richard Ador Chaplain of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Yes, we can remove our covers if we're wearing covers. I want to open in prayer and then we'll do the pledge. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of the fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. And Father, I want to lift up all the people here on the council and all of our officers and fire in the city of Jersey Village and protect them, Father, with the protection and just, Father, thank you for what they do for all of us. But we thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. We could turn and or look flat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please cover.
Great, thank you very much. We now have a set of presentations. The first is Presentation of Police Department Employee of the Third Quarter 2024 by Stephanie Otto, Commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Hi, good evening. Each quarter, the American Legion Post 324 Jersey Village Department Employee of the Quarter Selection Committee meet to review a list of candidates selected by their peers. This is in no way a small effort to task. Of all the employees of the department are outstanding individuals that serve a purpose greater than themselves. For the third quarter of 2024, the American Legion selection of Officer of the Quarter is Jacob Snyder. Officer Snyder has shown a high-level professionalism, dedication, and proactivity. He loves his job, and his work performance shows it. We thank you for your service and dedication to this department and our community. All these attributes work together to ensure the Jersey Village Police Department runs smoothly and provides our residents with peace of mind and makes Jersey Village a destination community. Few other officers were nominated for office of the quarter, and we thank them for their continued performance and dedication to our community. Officer Snyder? Thank you very much. Sorry, it just came out of the thing. Thank you.
And the next presentation we have is the Employee of the Month Award for October 2024 to Joey Schroeder, Austin Police City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, he's unable to be here tonight, but I just will take a brief moment to highlight him, thank him for everything he's done. He's only been with us a short time, but he's definitely made a huge impact with us here at the city. He's seamlessly integrated to the team, earning the respect and admiration of his colleagues and becoming an essential part of our operations. So I just want to say congratulations to Joey, and thank you.
And just to be sure that I get it right next time, is it Schroder?
Schroder.
Schroder, okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to joint public hearing. Item D1, conduct a joint public hearing with the Jersey Village Planning and Zoning Commission for the purpose of receiving oral comments from any interested persons concerning the request to amend the Jersey Village Code of Ordinances at Chapter 14, Article 4, Division 2, Section 14-101G by adding a new subsection 6 to address elevated garages. The request of Adal Kachana filed on behalf of Kasaba LLC owner to amend the Jersey Village Code of Ordinances at Chapter 14, Article 4, Section 14-105A, Table 14-105A at Car Wash by adding a special use permit to District K and the request of Adal Kachana filed on behalf of Kasaba LLC owner for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a car wash located at 15824 Northwest Freeway, Houston, Texas 77040, within the city limits in zoning District K. Okay, and once again, just to be sure that the record is clear, we do have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission here in addition to the city council. And Madam Secretary, have all posting requirements for this item been met?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I will now call to order this joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:09 PM. Everyone desiring to speak should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card to the city secretary. Each speaker will be given five minutes to present information concerning three different items. First, the request to amend New Jersey Village Code of Ordinances at Chapter 14, Article 4, Division 2, Section 14-101G by adding a new subsection 6 to address elevated garages. The request of Adal Kachana filed on behalf of Kasaba LLC owner to amend the Jersey Village Code of Ordinances at Chapter 14, Article 4, Section 14-105A, Table 14-105A at Car Wash by adding a special use permit to District K and the request of Adal Kachana filed on behalf of Kasaba LLC owner for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a car wash located at 15824 Northwest Freeway, Houston, Texas 77040, within the city limits in zoning District K. Now, at this time, I do not have any comment cards that are for this particular public hearing. Keep in mind, we still have the general public comment period, the citizen comment period, coming up after this. But just want to confirm that there is no one, no member of the public desiring to address this public hearing. Okay, so no member of the public, so we will we will move on to being no one desiring to speak. I now close this joint public hearing concerning elevated garages, text changes related to specific use permits for car washes in District K and the request to issue a specific use permit for a car wash in District K at 7:11 PM. That brings us to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time.
Bobby, I wanted to make a comment on D1 before they went back.
To make it here instead of when council gets to discuss later on?
Correct.
Okay, go right ahead.
I asked Austin to print out a little map, and you guys have it in front of you. I just wanted to make mention of a bigger idea that I feel like I've heard from the citizens over and over about thinking about development in JV proper. And this is one of my passion projects that I really want to get going in the city. So what you're looking at here is the land for sale across from where the Senate Avenue is, where Rose Roof, where Launch, that is where all this property is. And although I think a car wash is a great idea, I want us to also zoom out and think of the establishment that we've been keeping track of, the Blue Building. And then this other piece next to it, that's for sale. And then you can see the teal area, that's for sale, and what is this, a burnt, a brown area? And then if you go all the way up, you can see these are where that storage facility is, the O'Reilly Mr. Donut Shopping Center, and then there's a green square at the top that is also open land. And I would like you just to bring your eyes to this long street right in the middle of this picture. That's Hill Crest. It's a street that unless you're really on the golf cart, you really, it doesn't really get used. But if you'll see at the very, very top, there is about 430 feet of trees, but it could connect to Gulf Bank. So I just want, we don't have a lot of land on this side of 290. And I just want to think about the ability to develop this into something that could be beneficial for us. I've seen Little Kitchen thrive, Senate's thriving, Launch is thriving. And so I feel like there's a lot of these mom-and-pop businesses, specifically looking at sales tax revenue from restaurants. And when I hear this city, I mean, I know the Blue Building can't tell us who they are potentially going to lease to. But, you know, the idea of a coffee shop, well, what would need to be around that to attract that type of development? And you can see there's a lot of space, and especially if we can get that road right there, that 400 feet connected, that is connecting JV proper to this little nook of what could be more restaurants, more, you know, mom-and-pop-type small businesses. So I just wanted you to file that in the back of your mind when you went back there to think of, I don't want to put too many piecemeal things where that vision will never be able to come to fruition. I just wanted to kind of think about the bigger picture for development in the five-to-10-year scope.
Okay, thank you. Okay, coming back to citizen comments, citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first comment card I have is from Jim Fields.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I want to thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. My name is James Fields. I live at 16413 St. Hillier. I want to give everyone, the mayor and city council, kudos for keeping the city hall in Jersey Village. I think it's a fantastic idea, and the number-one thing is it encourages people to participate. And these citizens, one day, like yourself, will be on city council. So I thank you again for that. And also, thanks for selling the property across Highway 290. I think that was a visionary. I know it was difficult. You guys struggled very hard to turn that into something that would benefit the city, and it's not easy, as you probably know by now. And do you know how much we're going to sell that and when is my question behind that? My second thing I want to bring up is public information. In city council meetings, we should only endorse city sanctioned websites. The last city council meeting, a website, there was a private website that was endorsed or recommended to the public. We have a fantastic city website, and all information should be collected from there. Because what happened earlier was there was an event that was on this website that was not on the city manager's, sorry, the city's website, and it was corrected. I do appreciate that, and City Manager corrected that too. But again, we should use sanctioned city websites, which brings up another thing. On the website, and again, I want to thank City Manager for telling me at the top, if nobody else is familiar with the JerseyVillageTexas.com, there's some icons up there. We have one of them that shows a bird. Well, that bird has long flown away, and can we replace that with X, just to look professional? Then also, we have an icon for in, for indeed. And if you clicked on that, it shows the Honorable Late Joyce Barube as Mayor pro temp. So I don't know how we can fix that, but if we can look into that, I know, exactly, Mayor, I understand. It's out there, unless we talk to Mr. Barube. Okay, moving on, city streets maintenance. On Castle Bridge, there's a light pole that's been down for a couple of months. And next to Sam's, there's a street collapsing. It's getting worse to where you have to slow down. On Senate, there's a huge pile of a cut-up tree next to the bridge. That's been there since, I don't know, a couple of months here. And rumor has it that the actual person who owns that property was his tree. He chopped it, piled it up. This is huge, Mayor. I mean, this tree had to be at least, oh, maybe, you know, 30 inches in diameter, but it's been there for months. On Lakeview, at Philippine, there's a large pile of rubbish there for months. There's a beer bottle sitting there. Maybe we can ask this citizen to clean it up. North Tahoe, I believe that's the area, if I'm just going from memory here, a gutter sunken, sunken probably about maybe a foot or 10 inches, has two cones, been there for a couple of weeks. Pleasant Colony Drive, that's over here, if you, the first turn-in, if you're heading to Sam's, stop sign down, it's been down for a couple of weeks, just laying there. Village Drive, if you go down here, the stop sign's crooked and the landscaping is missing. Prior to that, the bushes were dead, but at least they cleaned them up. But if you look at the other side, it looks kind of ridiculous. When you look at the stop sign and you have the irrigation pipes sticking straight up, all the stones are missing and all the shrubber is gone. Been like that for months. And this is all to encourage people to live here. That's what they see. Senate, weeds in the flower beds for months. I don't know what happened. Many years ago, we used to have a staff that, I looked forward to see the pansies out there. It was very well-maintained. It looks like it's, I don't know what's going on there, Mayor, hopefully you can find out. Rio Grande, there's concrete breaking up in the center of the street, and it's getting worse. It's right where that water collects, right next to that park that the church has. Moving on, okay, tourist project. Is the tourist number two project still going? Okay, I'd like to have that answered. Golf course. The golf course has lost money the last two months, from what I've seen. And I was just curious, when do you think, or are the projections, when the golf course will turn a profit after spending $9 million bucks? Because now there are $9 million in the hole. I'm just curious when they're going to break even.
Sorry, Jim, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next comment card I have is from Bill Edwards.
Bill Edwards, 16001 Jersey. I have a problem with maintenance is being taken here in the village. I left this morning at Senate, and it was just trash all over the place. You could see the weeds coming in on Jersey. Same sort of thing is there. No one is taking care of it. Maintenance of the esplanade there on Senate is nothing near it used to be. They haven't been taking care of the crepe myrtles like they used to. It really looks bad for the village to have things like this going on. And the second thing is, we were walking our dog in the park, and of course, we walked around the pool. And it looks like they, I know y'all have closed the pool down, it looked like all they did was walk out and lock the gate. There's stuff scattered all about, the equipment, the nets, the poles, the brushes, the line in the grass. Those are perfectly good things that I saw that could be used in any future pool we have. The pool furniture is still all out, lots of it out in the sun, not covered. If we're going to have, build another pool, no reason we can't use some of that equipment. It should be put away instead of letting deteriorate outside. There's, by the equipment building on the outside of the fence where the water gauges come in and the valves are, that is uncovered. The cover is a few feet away, and it's full of water. There's, you know, that's dangerous. Yeah, kids over there playing and, boom, you know, someone turns an ankle or something. That shouldn't be. It's a simple matter of maintenance, and I'd like to see it increased, improved, back to where it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. And the final comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 37th installment, in 1961, the Jersey Village Country Club had an in-ground pool which had swim parties that Buddy Wall's son, Michael, has so many fond memories of. On February 12th, 1972, Clark Henry passed away. And in 1974, the city of Jersey Village sold the pool and golf property, golf course property to Cameron Ironworks, which gave $100,000 to build a city pool. Tropical Pool Company, as the lowest of four bids, was selected to design a small 200,000-gallon Z-shaped pool, though there were several issues the first years, such as plastering deficiencies and issues with third-party maintenance companies. Jersey Village's section of Harris County has a soil association of poorly drained, moderately permeable. Clay soil has minerals that cause it to be more reactive to wet-dry cycles, where it swells up like a sponge moving upwards and then shrinks down like a raisin, pulling away from concrete structures. These dynamic shifts in soil saturation can have a negative impact on pools and decks. Treating the soil with an organic compound could maintain the plasticity index of that soil within an inch, as recommended by MidCityPools.com. For public pools, the most predominant for a variety of users is Class A, which is any pool used with or without a fee for accredited competitive aquatic events, such as the Northwest Aquatic League's Jersey Village Stars. A Class A pool may also be used for recreation, which gives neighbors wonderful socializing opportunities. What better place to meet a new friend where every- What better place to meet a new friend where everyone can laugh and splash? Young children's wading pools are designed to be 18 to 24 inches and must have a sloped entry. This type of zero-depth pool entry is where the pool floor intersects with the water surface level, much like walking into and out of the ocean on the beach. A nice thing about two pools with independent circulation systems is if there is an unfortunate incident, the second pool is still available while the first is properly sanitized, since most swimming-related illness outbreaks are hard to control because the germ-causing diarrhea is not easily killed by chlorine. The bond request amount is not simply for a pool, but a conceptual complex to include new building structures, furniture, shade covers, exciting slides, locker rooms, lighting, and a mechanical room with extra space for pool chemicals ventilation. General obligation bonds fund government projects that will serve the public community. Certain community attractions can charge non-residents much higher usage fees. Texas statutes advise the proceeds of bonds issued may only be used to pay the cost of the project for which the bonds were issued. In other words, Texas law requires that the proceeds of voter-approved bonds be used only for the projects described in the ballot questions. As such, any unused amount will not be siphoned away into a slush fund, as that is illegal. Ten people drown each day in the U.S., and more than 4,500 people drowned each year from 2020 to 2022. 500 more people per year compared to reports from 2019 and earlier. Participation in formal swimming lessons could reduce the likelihood of childhood drownings by 88%. As public pools have closed, drownings have risen. According to the Centers for Disease Control, CDC data found that drowning was a leading cause of death for children between 1 and 4 years old, and more than 40 million adults don't know how to swim. I hope the citizens of Jersey Village can learn from the past and to make our future safe and enjoyable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Okay, that's all we have for citizen comments. That brings us to item F, City Manager's Report. Austin Blyce.
Mayor and councilors, the report's in front of you, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city manager from city council?
Yeah. Austin, regarding, there's been a lot of conjecture on social media and questions about order of operation on a bond. In fact, I sometimes find myself questioning exactly what's going to happen. So let's assume if the pool bond passes, what would be the next steps, and when would design come in that process, et cetera? And this go out for bid, et cetera?
So if the bond were to pass, we would start to work with councilman Hunsaker, who we've worked with now for a few months, to refine concept three, get any more citizen feedback the council would feel would be necessary, and do all of the design and construction documents. There's obviously a cost to that. My recommendation would be that we would kind of do those, pass the resolution of notifying our intent to issue the bonds, assuming the approval, so that at that point, we could repay ourselves from those bonds for those costs. And then, once we actually go out to bid, get the bid price, we can use that bid price to go out for the bonds at that dollar amount. Obviously, you're going to want a little bit of money in there for contingencies and those types of things as well, but that way, we wouldn't have to bond for the full amount if the project comes in lower than that. At this point, I would say we might be able to have bids early summer, May, June, something in there, and then work the bond. Work could begin after that, but the bonds would happen sometime in that June, July, August timeframe. That's kind of loose dates, of course, at the moment, but that's kind of how that would go. Now, if the bond does not pass, council did set aside money in the CIP budget for this year for the demolition of the existing pond, or the existing pool. So if the bond does not pass, we would work on getting together that bid package and putting that out to demolish the existing pool that's there today.
Thank you.
I'm bringing this up because it was brought up during public comment. In the event that we sell the property on the south side of 290, TERS 2.
At some point, TERS 2 could go away. I think it would behoove us to wait on closing down that TERS until we know exactly whoever buys it, what they're going to do. If it's going to be something that could be supported by the TERS, I think it would be useful to keep that tool intact. If it turns out to be something that is not going to be supported by the TERS or needs to be supported, or the city's not going to be involved in at all, then I think we could, the council could vote to close down TERS 2.
Austin, first, I wanted to commend the city staff. I did notice, actually, I've kind of been keeping an eye out on Senate Avenue since there have been some people who've raised some questions about maintenance over there. I did notice that there had been a lot of work done over there recently, as far as new mulch and all of that. You heard some of the comments concerned about a lot of little things along the way. What steps are we taking to sort of try to get to those items?
Right. So with the new budget year upon us, we're working on getting, I believe it's peonies, back into those areas. That'll be happening over the next week or two, making sure that the mulch is fresh. Also, looking at all the areas that we currently maintain. There's a few areas that just aren't conducive to keeping going, just because of the trees and stuff with some of the new gateway signs and those types of things. We tried to keep it going, it's just, it's not great with shade and whatever other reasons. So some of those things, we might look to be turning back to more of a constant green type of thing as well. But that is on the task list now of monitoring those things on a weekly basis to make sure it's looking as good as we can keep it.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Mayor, I'll also point out that the golf course fund made money for the second year in a row.
Thank you. I know sometimes, a month or two may be a little bit of a shift, but I do know that they've been a very strong position the last couple of years, so thank you. Okay. If there are no other questions for the city manager, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to move an item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes. That brings us to the regular agenda. Item H1, consider ordinance 2024-32, amending the general fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $190,140 by increasing various line items in Department 32 salaries, wages, and benefits. Isabel Cado, Finance Director.
When removing the newly adopted budget for 2425, we identified errors in the line items related to salary, wages, and benefits for Department 32. So we are including the breakdown in the package, so in order to, so we can correct that, those errors. That was due because of the, we had a problem with the position budgeting into the encode module, so we created a spreadsheet, but that spreadsheet, for some reason, didn't import it correctly in Department 32.
Okay. Questions from council? Or discussion?
I looked at the budget, and I mean, obviously, there was a difference. It wasn't zeros, right? There was some in there, and so I think when we did our budget meeting, I was questioning, like, how could we overlook salaries? Because we go practically line by line during the meetings, during those budget planning meetings. But then I looked at this, are there ways, like steps, we can do in the future that can prevent this sort of thing? Just trying to look for root cause analysis.
Right. So the spreadsheet that was used to import had the right numbers. All of the other departments had the right numbers. There was something with these line items in this department that I still haven't figured out what happened. I didn't catch it during the whole budgeting process. I mean, I looked over the whole thing how many times, and so did the staff. It's one of those things that's, we missed it.
Have we checked everything else to see, all the other budgets, or the departments, to see that this is the only mistake, so that we're only doing this once?
Everything else looked good.
So that was checked, that went through?
Yes. We checked everything. That was the only problem, Department 32.
And just, did I read this right? Because I could be wrong. Was this, we had to go to the spreadsheet because there was an issue with the encode itself?
The position budgeting module in encode, it's been finicky for a while, and it's one of those things that it's, the headache in trying to get that working properly and working with them was easier to go back to the old spreadsheet method.
And now I'm going completely inside baseball, and we can take this offline, but I'd like to ask, do we have a help desk ticket in with them? Or product complaint, or a feature request, or all of the above?
Definitely product complaints. We've raised it up pretty high as well on a lot of those things. We had quite a list that we've been working through. Position budgeting is one of those things that we don't use often, so we're kind of hoping other communities that are on like a calendar year for their budget or something like that can continue working on that process, and that Tyler will continue working on that process. But it is to the point where we are considering our alternatives to the suite of software when our contract is up in 2026.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion amongst council on this item? I mean, I know that this has not been an isolated issue as far as issues with encode, so I, and as someone who works with sometimes really badly-designed software, I can sympathize. Sometimes enterprise software can be not great. So I'm glad we caught it, and, you know, it is what it is. So, that being said, I'll entertain a motion on this item if there's no other discussion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-32.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to item H2, consider resolution number 2024-80, designating a city representative and an alternate representative to the Houston Galveston Area Council's 2025 General Assembly. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, this item is to appoint the representative and the alternate for the HDAC General Assembly for 2025. Last year's designated representative was Councilmember Mitchum, and the alternate was Councilmember Singleton. It's interesting to note here that the General Assembly luncheon for Home Rule Cities is going to be on Thursday, November 7, at 6:30, but we do have a special session, city council meeting set for that day, so I'm not sure how that works out, but I thought I'd point it out. But anyway, needless to say, this item is to appoint the representative and the alternate.
All right.
Does the alternate need to go as well with the, or is it just one person?
Sounds like we have an interested party in the alternate. It sounded like we have an interested party in being the alternate.
Well, I considered it since James was the one before, and so.
This is one where one of us needs to be there.
I don't, we obviously are not going to be there because we need to be at the meeting on the 7th, so there may be other duties throughout the year. So we'll be attending those functions, but for this particular meeting, not so much.
Yeah. I will still go to the other events, not the one that coincides with our special meeting.
I would say keep Michelle, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchum, and it sounds like Connie wants the other slot, unless somebody else is interested.
No, I would love that. It's just a bunch of men there. I'm usually like one of the five women, so.
But you're going to be the one going, so I'll just be the one.
Well, you can come to the other events. This is just the one where usually one person has to come.
All right. Fair enough. I'll do it. That's fine. No, I'm happy to do it.
It's nice to meet other council members from different cities. It really is beneficial for the city, I feel.
Okay. It sounds like we've got it set. Someone want to make that motion?
It doesn't say motion, it just says appropriate action.
There's a resolution, I believe, Resolution 2024-80.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at three. My apologies.
Somebody's reading ahead.
I'll make a motion to consider for Resolution 2024-80, designating Mayor Pro Tem Mitchum as our city representative and alternate councilmember Rossi to represent for the Houston Galveston Area Council's General Assembly.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? Resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H3, discuss and take appropriate action concerning the progress being made by the owners of the property located at 15830 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, to correct the substandard structure at this location. Misha Johnson, Community Development Manager.
She is still with P&amp;Z in the other room, but the owner's representative is here. If we'd like to have him present.
Sure, if you'd like to go ahead and give us an update, yeah.
We had a fairly productive couple of weeks on the building up there. The soffit and fascia have all been reframed, getting ready to put panels up on those. The panels are in with the subcontractor, and he's ready to go. We have excavated everything for the new parking area around the back of the building and the side. Tomorrow, we're going to be drilling light pole footings and getting those in. We do have the permanent electrical service built on the side of the building and run to where the power's going to come into the building. So that's the progress. I know the question y'all are all wanting to know is who's going to be there? We don't know yet. I did ask upper management. They're waiting to market that until we have the renovations all done, so there's no news on that front.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I just wanted to verify the water meter tap, all that did get taken care of. I saw that was supposed to happen the week of 10/1, I believe.
Yes. The water meter was delivered to the City of Jersey Village, and we purchased it and picked it up. It hasn't gone in yet. It's days away from going in. We're just trying to work out some final details as far as the location and everything of that. But we're in good shape there.
I appreciate the monthly updates. In fact, I appreciate you coming to the meetings. That says a lot about the attention you guys are presenting. One question, though, is kind of timeline, rough. I won't hold you to a specific date or even a specific week, but roughly, do you have an idea of when, if things go normally, when this might be?
We're probably looking, the last time I was asked that question, I said 90 days, and that was 60 days ago, so that leaves me 30 days. And I don't think I'm going to be done in 30 days, but I would say 60 days. We should be well wrapped up.
So before the end of the year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And this was before me, before I was on council, so this is within that permitted timeframe, right? All of this?
My understanding was that the timeframe that we gave was just for pulling the permit, correct? I don't know that we really got any further into the details.
We kept it as an agenda item each month, just so we could... We kept it as an agenda item each month just so we could. Make progress.
Make sure there was progress. I think there's also with construction and costs and everything like that or just timelines of it. As he's attested to, there are things that can go awry. So we made sure that they were paid attention to what was going on and let us know.
They also did deal with a derecho and a hurricane within just a few few months of each other, so.
No, I was just asking. It comes up from time to time.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I I am glad to see that that progress is continuing to be made and that we are at least looking towards having that that building brought up to standard by the end of the year. So.
Yes, sir.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay, that brings us to item H4. Consider resolution number 2024-81 approving the golf course master plan as prepared by Chet Williams Design LLC. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor and Council. In May of 2024, City Council approved a budget amendment to develop the golf course master plan with Chet Williams Design. The plan was designed to assess the current condition of the golf course infrastructure and service as a tool to help us map out the future of the Jersey Meadow Golf Course. The master plan includes a detailed assessment of current infrastructure, proposed improvements, and prioritized list of work items and a preliminary cost estimate. Key focus areas included aging greens, irrigation system issues, and the need to improve T areas and drainage systems. The greens, which are currently 37 years old, far exceed their typical lifespan of 15 to 20 years. The plan outlines options for greens renovation along with recommendation for reusing existing materials to cost effectively improve the T areas, which are undersized for the 50,000 rounds that we are experiencing annually. Additionally, the irrigation system, which is experiencing frequent breaks due to aging pipes, was analyzed and the option to upgrade the system were included while considering recent improvements that we made in 2021. The plan also explores some fairway shaping, lake capacity, bunkers, and landscaping to improve drainage, aesthetics, and stormwater management. This master plan provides a comprehensive framework for addressing the immediate and long-term needs for the golf course. While it is not the final representation of the projects to be undertaken, it can act as a guide for capital improvement planning over the next five to 10 years. The information will support budget and CIP discussions, allowing the city to plan strategically and adapt as needed to evolving priorities and financial considerations.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
I I'll just say, you know, we we've talked about this before, that the golf course is a major component of our flood mitigation plan. So it behooves us to make sure that we're continuing to put forth improvement plans so that we continue to improve improve the operations so that it will continue to to benefit us from a flood mitigation standpoint, but also that it continues to earn revenue. That helps us maintain that going forward. You know, being a golfer myself and and having, you know, been around Jersey Meadows for a very long time. I, you know, I it's something that I I feel is a benefit to the community, not only from flood mitigation, but from youth development. You know, it's nice to see young players getting out to learning how to play golf. And I think it's 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 an all around benefit and a gem in in the rough that I think can become a platinum diamond if we continue to to pace ourselves and 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 continue to to maintain as we go.
I agree wholeheartedly, except for the part about being a golfer. But I think I like the idea of having a master plan by professionals that that is all they do. Is this type of stuff is the evaluation and giving people the recommendations with what they need. And I think it's a I think it's great. You know, we've got to we got to know how to take care of what we've got to make sure we're, like you're saying, not only flood mitigation, but increasing revenue.
I'll second that. Having a master plan has bode well for us in several projects that we've done before. And once again, just kudos to how the city is run. If the average lifespan of of greens is 15 to 20 and we're almost at the 40 year mark, we got double the lifespan out of that golf course. And I mean, we did something similar with the pool. We we really do take care of our city really well, so that speaks volumes to that.
I appreciate that there are priorities in here so we can know what's what first to attack or address as well as estimated costs. Now granted, these are estimated costs in October 2024. We'd have to apply inflation, et cetera, and get other bids. But it at least gives us a line in the sand of what we can expect. And whether or not there's an ROI on that and whether it's return, et cetera, or there's a workaround or some sorts. But all that's part of that and all this is an objective group's vision of what can be and the path to get there. And so that's that's, I think, what we need, as Sherry said, to take this to the next level.
Yeah, I will say I'm the fact that it does say this is a over the course of it looks like five to 10 years. So this is not a all at once type thing. But it is. It would be good to kind of see this as we start to get into or when y'all get into the budget cycle next go around to to see how this all plays out in terms of where these projects are are put into the capital improvement plan. The funny thing is, one of the first things I learned when when looking at like finances in the city is that I thought it was a little odd that the golf course as a whole had a depreciation line in in the line. And it's actually one of the very few cases where land has depreciation. And it's for this reason, because at some point it does have to be reworked and it has to be sometimes replaced. So this at least provides us a roadmap for how we get there. So any other discussion or questions from council?
I think you guys covered it for me, so.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2024-81.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? Resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H5. Consider resolution number 2024-82, receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's final report concerning the request to amend Chapter 14. Before I get into this, they're still meeting, aren't they? Yeah, why don't we go check? I'm not going to read off the whole thing if they're not yet ready. I take it we're at a. We're we're, yeah. Let's let's just see how far along they are, yeah. I'd rather not jump back and forth. Yeah, and just I apologize, so because the reason we're waiting is because all of the remaining regular agenda items hinge on planning and zoning returning with their reports, so. I mean, if y'all really do want to make more efficient use of the time, if you want to give about yourself about 30 seconds to think about your mayor and council comments, we can we can call that out of order. No, no, the mayor and council comments, that's usually towards the end. Okay, why don't why don't we do this? Let's do mayor and council comments real quick, knock that out. So with that, okay, I'll let Laura get back to her minutes. I will start. Y'all both are eating at the same time. I'm going to start down at this end with Mayor Pro Tim Mitchum.
Hey, everyone. Happy October. I hope you get a chance to drive down Candy Corn Lane. It only makes me that much more excited for when our city turns into all of the various streets coming up very shortly. I heard there's a whole cold front coming in soon, so I'm very excited about that. And thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wasson.
Beginning October 21, which is part of the reason we're meeting tonight as opposed to next Monday, this building becomes a voting center, which means it's time to vote. So as always, I implore you to go get informed on the issues and the candidates. I know the League of Women Voters and another, I think, Community Impact, as well as The Chronicle and all that, have voting guides already out there available. So decent information sources there. And early voting begins next Monday. Let's see, lots of activities still going on. So the Jersey Village City website has a calendar page. That's a great, great place to go find out when meetings and events are scheduled. And in addition to that, Jersey Village also has an app, which is a great way to report maintenance issues and code violations and other areas, as well as submit them to council and city staff. But the app is probably the most efficient way to do that. But yeah, that's what I got. And I guess next time we'll meet, it's going to be near Thanksgiving. So have a great October and celebrate the cold front that's coming through on. Oh, homecoming parade on the 23rd this month.
All right, Councilmember Rossi.
My list keeps getting bigger. Okay, congratulations to Officer Snyder and did I say that right? And Joey Schroeder. Laura Capps was named on the top of the HR leaders in the Houston area by the Houston Business Journal. So congratulations to her. Also JV becoming, and this was actually in your letter, a FEMA CRS Level 5 community, which provides or could provide a discount for flood insurance. I think that's pretty cool. Also, I tagged along with Chief Keel and Kim Murphy on National Night Out, and I wanted to thank you for that. I got to meet a lot of neat people and I enjoyed it. And I appreciate everyone welcoming me in and everybody was so kind. I attended the first annual Brew Fest, which was a great opportunity to socialize with neighbors. And then the open house that was hosted by the Police Department, the Fire Department. And it was again a reminder of how awesome you are. So thank you guys for everything you do.
And Councilmember Snacks. No, Councilmember Mercrey.
I wanted to say I wanted to bring up the Police and Fire Open House. We did not attend to this year, but as we drove by going to one of the 500 events we had to attend that day, I noticed the long lines of kids waiting to get on the fire truck. And and it was so cool to see because it reminds me of the when my children were in, you know, being pushed in a stroller to go. And they still talk about how great it is. So it's a fantastic community engagement and I do appreciate that. One thing on a serious note, two weeks ago, there were some CFISD students that were injured on their commute to school in the morning. And since our school district is no longer providing buses for a large majority of our students, there's a lot more kids walking, riding their bikes, being out and about. And so I just want to remind everybody to be cognizant of that and be aware of your surroundings. More kids, kids are not, well, let's be honest, kids don't pay attention as much as they should, but neither do distracted drivers. So if you just heads up, be aware. And Halloween is coming up. And if you are going to pass out Almond Joys or Mounds, I would appreciate you letting me know because I would like to come by. And that's about it.
I thought we were about to get into food allergy talk, but. So to piggyback off of the early voting discussion, yes, early voting starts on Monday. I highly encourage you to make a plan to get out and vote. And that that plan should not be Election Day. Make a plan to get out and vote, early voting. The other thing I want to mention is it's going to be a long ballot. I know it's going to take a while, but I want to encourage you to do your research. You can get a sample ballot from the county at Harrisvotes.com printed out. You can make notes, do your research, and you can take that those notes with you into the polling place. That is state law, you can take that with you. And I encourage you to to research as many of the items that are on the ballot as possible. There are many, many important races throughout the ballot. I realize that the the headline is sort of the the folks at the top of the ballot, but there are a lot of folks down ballot that make a huge impact in our county and in our city. And so if you have concerns about crime or you have concerns about a lot of other basic issues in our area, I highly encourage you to do your research and consider all of those races all the way down the ballot. So with that, we are going to go ahead, go into executive session. City Council is now going to retire to a closed session at 8:01 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, deliberations about real property, and Section 551.071, consultations with attorney in connection with the following items. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, deliberations about real property, and Section 551.071, consultations with attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate information about the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related thereto. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. Okay, the closed session was adjourned at 8:19 PM, and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. So we're going back to where we left off. We are back in item H5, Consider Resolution Number 2024-82, receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's final report concerning the request to amend Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas by amending Chapter 14, Article 4, Division 2, Section 14, 101, 3, by adding a new subsection 6 to address elevated garages. Rick Faircloth, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The P and Z met after the public hearing, and we reviewed this item on the agenda. And there were no changes from our preliminary report. And it was a unanimous decision to go forward with the, with that particular item. We, we have, I've given the, signed off documents to the City Secretary, and she has those in her, in her possession.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rick. Any, any questions from council? Keep in mind, this resolution is just to accept the report.
This is the elevated garages, right? I just want to make sure we are all on the same page. Thank you.
We're on number six, yes.
Correct. So if there's no questions, or then I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-33.
Sorry, it's 2024-82.
I skipped ahead to the next one. I pulled to Jennifer. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-82.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H6, Consider Ordinance 2024-33, amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas by amending Chapter 14, Article 4, Division 2, Section 14-101G, by adding a new subsection 6 to address elevated garages, providing a severability clause, providing for appeal, providing a penalty as provided by Section 1.8 of the code, and providing an effective date. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so Mayor, this ordinance will, if approved, will enact what the Planning and Zoning Commission has just recommended concerning elevated garages.
All right, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this.
Yeah, Austin, do you happen to know the stage of any of the houses going through FEMA elevation now, if they're in design phase or prior to that?
So anything that's already have permits issued, we wouldn't be able to apply this to. That's everything from the fiscal year 2020 ones. Anything for fiscal year 22 has not been permitted yet, so those, these new standards would apply.
Now, if, there is a level, if I remember correctly, at which if they do major work on the home, they do have to bring it up to code, correct? So that would include this? Well, I guess since this is garages that are to be elevated.
Right. So if that would apply or not, there might, there might be one out of the two homes that would potentially at some point meet this.
Do we know which, do we know how many homes are already either completed or in process that have permits that, that this is a concern about?
We've got two homes that still have garages, garage doors that are elevated. I believe the one is still working to put in a rail wall. The other one has been that way for a few years now. So I think this is really just the one.
So we're just on that one house? Okay.
Yeah, it's on Acapulco.
So the focus really is on future, okay, okay.
The one on the main cross street, they're already putting a garage downstairs, so it does appear that they're going to make it flush.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-33.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in 4, Section 14-105A, Table 14-105A, at car wash by adding special use permit to District K. Rick Faircloth, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And there was no restrictions or anything suggested in that, oh, I'm sorry. This one here is just for, just for the SUP in District K. We already have a car wash in some other districts, but it was not, was not available in District K. And so we did approve that for our final report.
So again, this is simply receiving the final report. And so unless there's any questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
No, I just, before I forget, I want to thank Rick and the committee on spending this extra time and coming in. You already meet once a month or once every other month already for an hour, two hours, and to come in and spend two extra hours for public hearings and then extra meetings is very commendable. So thank you and the committee for doing that.
So just so that I'm clear, this particular report that was approved was adding a special use permit for a car wash in District K.
That's all, that's it.
But it's not, is it granting a special use permit? This is just adding the option, like, we're, okay, I just want to, thank you.
People don't know how to move, Jenny, talk about this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same one.
Yeah.
Because District K runs up to O'Reilly and all in that area.
But if you prove that in the future, couldn't they just apply for a permit on the, at that same spot?
It still has to go through Planning and Zoning, right? To get a special use permit? It just gives you the opportunity to go to Planning and Zoning to request a special use permit if, I believe.
If somebody else wanted to put a car wash next to a car wash, then this, at that location, this council has to approve.
Yeah, at the end of the day, this, well, first of all, this is just the resolution receiving the report. And then we're going to be looking at an ordinance that we consider whether to even give an option to someone to request a special use permit. And then even still, it doesn't open the floodgates because each individual case, whether this one or any future ones, would then have to ask for a special use permit, so.
Okay, correct.
So that being said, we have before us resolution 2024-83, simply receiving Planning and Zoning Commission's report, final report on this item.
I'll, motion for resolution 2024-83.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of resolution 2024-83. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H8. Consider ordinance number 2024-34, amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas by amending Chapter 14, Section 14-105A, Table 14-105A, commercial permitted uses by adding a special use permit to car wash for zoning District K, providing a severability clause, providing for repeal, providing a penalty as provided by Section 1-8 of the code, and providing an effective date. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, passing this ordinance would update the city's Code of Ordinances for District K by adding SUP in the commercial use table.
So again, this is the actual ordinance which would even make it possible for the city to receive applications for special use permits for car washes in zoning District K.
Are you okay if I ask Rick a question?
Oh, go right ahead. And Rick, when you answer your questions, when she asks if you can go up to the mic so we get a clearer record.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to verify that everybody on Planning and Zoning was in agreement to have this added.
Yes, yes, because we, there were other districts that had a car wash. And one of them is District H, which is down Jones Road towards 529. And the other one is G, which is up by the CBS, which we have a car wash there. And so this is just another, another district. I don't think there was any particular comments about this particular, putting it, putting it in the, in the ordinance, of allowing it to go into the ordinance. I think your future items will have more discussion.
And just to clarify, if we don't allow the opportunity for someone to request a special use permit, they have to go through the building board of adjustments to look for a variance, correct? I just, so if we don't allow the special use permit being an option, the next step for someone that wants something to go in there would have to go through the building board of adjustments to look for a variance grant, correct?
I don't think so, because at that point, there is no zoning for it.
There's no zoning for it.
It's not allowed at all.
It's not, right now, it's not allowed at all.
Okay.
This would just allow to do it. That's all. On that table is just another box that says SUP.
It gives them permission to ask for permission.
Gives them permission to ask for permission.
Not to be confused with double secret probation.
Right. Okay.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or discussion amongst council? And if I, if I'm, if I'm correct, I think zoning K is that little sort of light industrial corner where there's like the HGB driving, 18-wheeler driving school thing and I guess the Home Depot warehouse for their products, yeah?
Home Depot used to be in that area, Security Way in that area.
All right, District K?
Right, District K goes from Dillard Drive south to 290, and then it goes over through the Security Way, the industrial buildings there, and then there's a small portion still on the other side of 290 for District K.
Right, but includes also the property at Dillard's and.
Right, District K as well.
It does extend all the way to that, yeah.
Well, I, I don't think this is something that I can get on board with. I feel like we have enough areas where there could be a car wash. And I would, I just don't see that being a good use of that space over there for what it could potentially inhibit in development, but I could be alone on that island.
Do you think it's, do you feel strongly enough about it to not even be an option to request a special use permit? Because this is just to be, to allow, I'm just curious, because, I mean, I'm not saying I disagree with you, because I don't, I don't think I do, but I'm just curious.
To me, that would be confusing to allow it to be an option if you would plan on not allowing it. If there weren't other options where it wasn't accessible, then, then I'd say yes. But if we already have two other districts specifically on Jones where we have more high traffic.
Well, if we're discussing, I guess. Mine is actually not even about development. My concern is, this is my experience in what I do, but the chemicals and things like that that get, that go through the sand traps and go into our, eventually get into our wastewater treatment. What are they using? Are they biodegradable? That kind of thing. I know that we have two car washes already, but I just, my worry for this in the future would be that we would end up with some problems there.
When, when did we last, I thought it was, Rick, I know you'll recall, but when did we last go through and look at our districts and update that? Because I remember that not being too long ago, correct? Like, two years ago or so?
It was about two years ago when we went through and.
Like, we went through all the districts and all the things and checking all the boxes and.
And we went through there and then, in addition to adjusting.
Oh, apparently, that was May of '23. So that's not even, like, so it was adopted.
Right, and we also did tables as opposed to text of what, to make it easier to read, which.
We spent about a year and a half working on it.
Yeah, yes, no, I mean, like, it was a long, ongoing project. I guess from my standpoint, it's also, why are we revisiting this for one specific reason if we've already spent, I mean, the amount of money we spent on going over this already with the building officials and, you know, our lawyers? I feel like maybe this is not worth adding because we've already done this.
But you know, Jennifer, we, we, I'm sorry.
You know, we have the shopping center down here, you know, we have all the residential stuff down by Whataburger and Chick-fil-A and so forth. And when somebody wants to put in something special in there, they have to come back to P&amp;Z and if it's not listed on that table, they have to, have to request a special use for something. We, we had that one several years ago where people wanted to put in a massage parlor, as you well know. And that's, these things that we, so they, I think the idea is you allow it to be used in the table, but then if the city then wants to, by ordinance, allow a, to not go into there, then you have to say, we'll allow it, but with these restrictions, just like we did with, with the one on Jones Road. We put a lot of restrictions about shielding from the residents and times that it would be open and closed, so you didn't have noise all hours of the day. And I think a lot of that will come on this next item on the agenda that y'all can put some, because there's a section in there with restrictions and limitations and so forth and so on.
I guess I'll be, you know, I guess for me, when I really sit and think about it, it comes down to the fact is, if it's not in there, like, if it's not even an option in the box, it has to go through the whole process we're doing right now where we have to amend the district, like, or we have to amend the ordinances. We have to do all of this, then they have to go request their special use permit, then we do all that. So right now, it's a lot of hurdles to jump through versus it just being the, applying for a special use permit. Now, granted, I'm not saying getting a special use permit is an easy thing by any means, but not even having it as an option does give you another, like, it's another step, right? It's something else you'd have to go through, so.
Well, if you.
I don't know.
If you don't approve this special use permit for this zone, then anything you want to put across on Dillard wouldn't be allowed either, because that's in the same zone.
So here, so if we, so if we approve a special use permit, then we open it up to more options, basically, for.
Well, this isn't about approving the special use permit. This is just giving it as an option within the district.
This is.
Still have to come in and.
Right now, but yeah, let's, let's make sure we're being.
Car wash within the district.
Precision here is very important because otherwise it causes a lot of the confusion that's, that's happening here. So what, what we're being asked to consider is, right now, and forget about any other kind of use, let's only focus on car washes. The, what we're being asked to consider at this moment with this particular item is, do we want to even make it possible for someone who wants to operate a car wash in District K, anywhere in District K? Do we want to even make it an option for them to request through the use of a special use permit to ask permission to open a car wash? In other words, if we, if you reject this ordinance, what that is saying essentially is, you do not want to see a car wash in District K under any circumstances, full stop. If you pass it, you say, we would be open to the idea of a car wash somewhere in District K and potentially with certain conditions that would be made part of the special use permit.
Thank you.
That's it.
Sorry, it sounds pedantic, but it's, it's, it's kind of technical.
You spoke slowly and I appreciate that.
And it's not a foreign language, so he spoke.
Well, I also had to think through it in my own mind.
That's right.
So I personally, I think it's such a large, the reason I mentioned like where it was generally, I know we're talking about this specific location, but if we're talking generally about District K, I could see a scenario where at some point, somewhere in District K, there may be a possibility that we would approve, or we would at least want to consider a special use permit for a car wash somewhere in that district. It is kind of light industrial, so it seems like it would be at least cohesive with the general area in some parts.
So you're wanting, so what you're saying is you want to keep it open to the option of speedy stop at some point, wanting to do a gas station with a car wash on the opposite side of Dillard?
That's exactly how I'm taking it.
That's what I was going to ask. If this is meant to be a standalone or if this also covers gas stations that would have a.
Are gas stations part of the, in that area or not?
I think they're in District K as well.
There was one there, so I.
The front of it is in Dillard on the left, the little tiny pie is, is District K.
If gas stations are already there, I think making a car wash at SUP is not out of the realm of reasonable, reasonability? I don't even know if that's a word.
Never stopped other people in politics from making up words.
Oh, dear. And then District H is across the highway.
We're, it's, it's only, the way I'm taking it is just giving it, if, when we add, add this special use permit, we're not saying, yes, bring all your car washes to us. We're just saying, here, here, now, if you want to apply to bring it, at least it's an option for us to even consider. So like, if, I don't know, a really popular, sort of world famous, gas station decided that Jersey Village was their place, but they had to put a car wash, I don't want to be the person that said no.
Would you like me to bring my computer over and show you how small District K is? It's not big.
I've seen them squeeze one of those things in in Cypress.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I get excited.
I mean, if you're referring to Buc-Ee's, maybe you could fit a Buc-Ee's in if they bought all of District K.
It's too tiny for that, sorry.
A girl can dream.
A girl can dream, but let's go, if we're going to dream for Buc-Ee's, I'm going to prove it as Zone A, B, C, D, E, F, G, no.
We can talk convenience store versus a large interstate highway store, but that's for different conversations.
I still think it's not a good use of that space for K.
I think, I'm talking right over you, I'm sorry, Michelle.
No, I think.
I think it comes down to that if, if one is feeling that they don't want this particular item in the place where it is, but want to hold out for, leave it for another car wash, then that same entity can do what this entity did and come and request for another special use permit and then, and we'd go through the double, double activity again. I think it's, on the other hand, I'm also one that's a believer in free market and let those things happen, but we do have zoning for a reason, because we want certain things to occur in there. And since we did just do some things about a year ago and approve these changes, that that kind of hoisted our vision of Zone K, of what we wanted there.
I agree.
Are you, can you just clarify what that means your opinion is?
I didn't dance around it well enough?
So, for, someone asked earlier if gas station, and I'm trying to remember what PC means, I'm going to scroll up.
Permitted with conditions, gas stations.
Permitted with conditions, so it's actually slightly, gas stations are allowed with conditions, so they don't, they don't even require a special use permit for gas stations in K. This would be, the gas, if we were to approve this ordinance, car washes would have, would be more tightly restricted than gas stations would be.
So the gas station just can't be within 3,000 feet of another gas station? That's the condition?
Okay, thank you. But again, with a special use permit, you, you, you pick and choose, whereas with that one, it's just as long as they meet that condition, they can do, it's permissive.
Yeah, I think to answer your, your question, Councilmember McCray, I am, although a firm believer in the free market, I'm also a firm believer that we do have zoning for a reason. And I, I, I'm thinking, I'm leaning towards, towards not wanting to, to allow for special use permits in this realm.
I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote.
I don't, what do you do when you, what, what verbiage do you use?
Well, it depends, what, what have we got here? I'm, I, I hear two votes against, so I, I believe, so that's three? Okay, then, then it sounds like at this, well, I'm just saying, either way, you can make any motion you want, but if, if we're going based off of the way we're leaning right now, then it would be a motion to, to deny or to, to.
But if you do a motion to deny, is it still the same number? Does that change? It would be a motion to approve and then you vote it down, is what I think would happen. You don't want to make a negative motion.
That's what I was asking, what's the logistics to say?
Or take no action.
My advice is to listen to Lori.
Okay, that's always good advice.
Okay. Straight facts. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-34.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
So it dies for lack of a second.
Usually the person that's not for it isn't going to make the motion, though.
As, as we've established over the last seven years, there are no rules here.
If we, if, if nobody makes a second motion, does it not just die? It dies.
Correct.
But I'll make a second motion, because I, I'm fine with it.
Okay, and just to make sure that we don't have any confusion on what we're doing right now, the motion, the motion, let's, let's all focus for about a minute here. The motion before us is to approve this ordinance, so therefore, if you believe that there, that the, our ordinances should be amended to allow for the option to request special use permits for a car wash, you would vote aye. If you believe that the ordinances should remain as is, you would vote nay. Is everyone clear?
I don't have a second yet.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Rossi, you second it.
I second it.
Correct, so we have a, we have a motion from, from Mayor Pro Tem Mitchum, we have a second from Councilmember Rossi. Everyone clear on the motion before the council?
We are.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay. All of those in favor of the ordinance, please signify or raise your hand. All of those, thank you, all of those against the ordinance. And that's everyone, so no abstentions, and so therefore, at a vote of one to four, the ordinance, the motion fails, so therefore, we are moving on.
I believe we still need to accept the report, but we would not do the final.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, therefore, we are moving on to item, let me scroll down here. Are we, we're on H nine, correct?
I thought so.
Yes, okay, sorry, I'm.
That means there's no H ten then, right?
Item H nine, consider, let's, let's take them one at a time. Consider resolution number 2024-84, receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's final report concerning the request of Adel Kachana filed on behalf of Caspa LLC owner for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a car wash located at 15824 Northwest Freeway, Houston, Texas 77040, within the city limits in zoning District K. Rick Faircloth, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The council, Planning and Zoning, had discussed this item, and we, we had no problem with it based on item seven above, you know, we, there was a, was some discussion, and discussion was, we want to promote business in the village, and just because some people don't like it, and there were, there was some spirited conversation about it. We thought it was the, the best to let the free market take its place and, and go forward. So that, that was, that was our recommendation.
Great, thank you, Rick. So again, this is just receiving the report, and we'll just kind of close the circle on this, and so I would entertain a motion at this time on the resolution.
Wait, wait, are we on 2024-35?
2024-84, we're, we're, this is the last of the three reports we're receiving from Planning and Zoning.
Just wanted to verify, thank you.
So again, I would, I would entertain a motion on resolution 2024-84 at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2024-84.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? Resolution 2024-84 is approved unanimously. Now, bringing us to item H ten, in light of the fact that our previous actions as a council have rendered this item moot, I would recommend taking no action on item H ten. And just to be clear, that, that was the ordinance that was proposed to grant the special use permit that is not legally allowed.
With restrictions.
Well, with, yeah, with restrictions, but at this point, at this point, it's, the restriction is, sorry, you don't get a special use permit. So with that, I believe that we have run out of items on the agenda with our, with our, with our very out of order meeting. But hey, we, we got done, we, we actually got done before nine o'clock, so that's, that's an achievement in and of itself. All right, thank you, everyone. With that, meeting adjourned.